And I can run that issue.
Alright. I'll go back to this, let's think, all technique.
Adam, do you want the lights on?
Sure.
Yes.
Do you prefer them off? I mean, it makes us look a little sinister.
Wait, we can, we can have them on. Yes, please.
Evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the planning commission of the city of Campbell for March 28, 2023. Quick, please have a roll call.
Commissioner Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Ching. Absolutely. Commissioner Ostrowski. Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Commissioner Craig.
Here.
Pastor Scissor.
Here.
Chair Befender.
Present. Thank you. See, we have two sets of minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review those?
I did look at them and this is very minor, but I'm noticing it's very top. It says the meetings are called to order by Chair Ching.
I have noticed that too. I don't know if that's been going on the whole time.
And his reign of terror is over, so. It's my only note.
Yes, that is, that is in fact the case. Also on page nine, I noticed that it says, planning commissioners were on the favor, should be in favor. That's all. Does anyone have any other notes? We have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
My second.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Pastor Scissor.
Aye.
Chair Befender.
Aye. Do we have any agenda modifications or post movements?
We do. I'm a straight committed on director. I'll just say, we have a supplemental piece of information that was provided by Commissioner Snisser and forwarded to the commission and also when we get to that item, we can show that to the commission also. Other than that, no changes.
Okay, and that would cover communications as well?
That is correct.
Okay. This is the point in the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items concerning the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission, but we may not take any, any action on those items this evening. That'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak? Anyone online like to speak? That'll close the public hearing. Brings us to item one, PLN 2022-145, Public Hearing to Consider Request of TOPA Architecture to Allow Exterior Facade Alteration Including Repainting and Removal Existing Onings in Existing Commercial Building Listed on the Campbell Historic Resource Inventory as a Designated Structure of Merit, Commonly Known as the B.O. Curry Building, Probably Located at 415 List Campbell Avenue. Larissa Luenen is the planner for this.
Thank you. The item I have brought to you tonight is a Tier One Historic Resource Alteration Permit and a Site and Architectural Review Permit to allow the exterior facade alteration of an existing commercial building. The building is currently listed on the Campbell Historic Resource Inventory as a Designated Structure of Merit and is commonly known as the B.O. Curry Building. Pursuant to Campbell Municipal Code Sections 213270B2 and 213380, the scope of work requires both the approval of a site and architectural review permit and a Tier One Historic Resource Alteration Permit due to the exterior alterations proposed. The Historic Preservation Board has reviewed this application during a public meeting and is serving as the recommending body. The proposed project is located on a conforming 5,850 square foot lot within the C3 zoning district located in downtown Campbell and predominantly surrounded by other commercial buildings. The site is governed by both the C3 zoning district standards and the downtown development plan. The site was originally developed in 1913 by B.O. Curry with a multi-tenant two-story building serving as office space for his retail, for his real estate business on the second floor and offering ground floor retail space occupied by a drugstore. The building was constructed in the California Mission Revival architectural style as noted in the Department Parks and Recreation Form and evidenced in the existing character-defining features, which include the partially flat clay tile roof, multi-light wood casement windows, stucco and brick siding, and decorative features including the recessed niches and brick ornamentation. The building was added to the city's historic resource inventory in 1984 and currently operates as an office on the second floor with vacant retail space and a restaurant on the ground floor. As noted on the project plans, the proposal includes the removal of six non-authentic onings currently located above the second-story windows on the south and east facades. As you can see, by removing the onings, the original wood casement windows facing the street would be more visible from the public right of way, resulting in enhanced, in an enhanced expression of the building's history. The applicant is also proposing to refresh the paint of the stucco siding and wood and window and door trim. The selected colors are well-coordinated to reflect a color palette accurate to the California Mission Revival style, comprising a light, natural, neutral color for the stucco siding, paired well with a darker, contrasting dark brown for the wood elements. As seen from the renderings, these proposed paint colors will complement the reddish-orange of the clay tiles and brick exterior. The Secretary of Interior Standards provides guidance that building elements should be maintained through regular maintenance, such as repainting, to increase material longevity. As a note, this project also initially contained a proposal to restore the original storefront by increasing the first-floor area by 90 square feet, but due to FAR regulations found within the downtown development plan, the applicant was unable to increase the building size as the current lot's FAR exceeds the allowable 1.5. On February 28th, the Site and Architectural Review Committee reviewed this application at their regular meeting. While generally supportive of the application, the SARC members voiced concern regarding the proposed paint color, the Benjamin Moore White Dove, and whether it would be an appropriate shade to repaint the building's stucco. During the SARC meeting, staff and the applicant confirmed that the paint palette for the project was carefully selected to be representative of the California Mission Revival style. The applicant painted a swatch of the proposed color on the building to provide visual representation of the paint color as seen on the slide. Based on this color sample, staff believes that the color selected, while a substantial deviation from the existing, is still representative of the California Mission Revival style. I also wanted to remind the planning commission that this application is governed by design standards found within the Campbell Municipal Code as they pertain to the C3 zoning, zoning district. Specifically Sections 211060I7 provides guidance pertaining to proposed colors, finishes, and materials, and these, these requirements include the following: that the primary building color shall be characteristic of the building's architectural style, that the paint trim shall coordinate with, with primary facade colors to add more depth and interest to buildings, and that coordinated color schemes shall respond to the style of the structure and be developed for each building. So a coordinated color scheme. To address these design standards within the Campbell Municipal Code, staff researched the California Mission Revival style, which demonstrates that the paint palette selected for the exterior features is well-coordinated and representative of this architectural style. The National Park Service characterizes the features of this architectural style in the essay "Mission Revival Style, 1890s through 1920s", and describes buildings in the styles having white stucco walls and clay tile roofs. This is further exemplified by the Fort Mason Chapel, as seen in this slide, as an example of the architectural style as provided by the National Park Service. As you can see, this building embodies the characteristics of the Mission Revival style, specifically the white stucco walls. Therefore, the paint choices supports the architectural style per Campbell Municipal Code. I also want to emphasize that these colors were selected by the applicant to create a unified color scheme. The colors were chosen to go together to represent the architectural style. The main body of the building is lighting color, taking inspiration from the whitewashed stucco and adobe, and adobe building materials of the Spanish colonial era, and the trim was selected as a dark brown to contrast the white walls and complement the reddish-orange of the clay tiles and existing brickwork, which makes this building historically significant. In conclusion, staff iterates that the Historic Preservation Board has recommended that the planning commission approves a Tier One Historic Resource Alteration Permit and Site and Architectural Review Permit. As noted on this slide, the resolution shall contain a correction indicating that the chair of the planning commission will be for signature. This concludes my presentation, and I can now take questions at this time.
Okay, let's start from this side.
Yeah, thanks for that, Larissa. It's such a cool building and thanks for that report, very thorough. Just, I just have one question that just came to me as we're, and I don't know, it's impossible to answer, but you know, in the report and in your presentation, we talk about the non-authentic onings and that the removal of the onings will actually bring, bring out the historical elements of the building better, which makes sense to me, which leads me to the question of, do we have anything that this allows the onings to begin with? How, how come those onings wound up there? Is that not an, an element of our historic preservation?
Well, they were added likely before our historic preservation came to be within the city of Campbell. I also wanted to note, as written in the staff report, that fabric onings are encouraged traditionally within the downtown, as noted in our downtown development plan. However, because these onings were added and are not significant to, or do not enhance the character-defining features of the building or enhance its historic significance, staff is supportive of the applicant's proposal to remove them.
Okay, thank you. Very thorough answer. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. What I comment is, I think you did a great job. Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I learned about this, it was covered.
So I, I'm familiar with this because we had SARC on this last month and I actually don't have any questions about it, so I guess I'll reserve for comments later. I do appreciate you adding information on, on the color scheme. The reason the color came up in SARC was because I noted that there was a lot of emphasis on the onings and I noticed that the color was going to be different than the existing color, so I thought it was worthy of, of, of looking more into the color, but I, I'll make, I'll, I'll reserve my comments for later, but and because I really don't have any questions on it this time.
I appreciate your stress.
Thank you, Larissa. That was a very nice overview and I really appreciate all the detail and the history that you presented. It was, you definitely learned something. No, no questions. Thanks.
Echo all the comments on the report. Mostly procedural question, why did this have to go to both the planning commission and the historical preservation board? Like, why couldn't this just go to historical preservation board? What caused it to be both?
Respond to that. So the Historic Preservation Board does not have direct decision-making authority. It always serves in advisory capacity. Most changes are made, are recommended from the board to the director and made administratively. That's generally because most of the city's historic buildings are residential in nature and don't actually require planning mission review. The exception to that are a few historic downtown commercial buildings, which commercial buildings generally do require some level of planning mission review. Hence, it went to historical preservation board and then to planning commission.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And just that being said, the scope of work here, had it not been an historic building, likely would have been approvable by staff because of the extra considerations of an historic building, it didn't need that extra level of review.
Thanks for clarifying that. So just to make sure I understand this, first off, thank you. This is exquisitely thorough. Would this, under the new process that we discussed with the Historical Preservation Board, would this also go, like with the process that was proposed, would this also come before the planning commission? Would this be done by, by staff, given that it's just repainting the outside?
I re, if I recall correctly, I believe that the proposed process would allow this to go to the board and then for, to the director through an administrative decision process.
Okay.
So like, if that process goes through, we will not be seeing things like this unless they're appealed or whatnot. It's still discretionary, but unless there's a reason to forward it to the planning commission or if it's appealed.
Okay. There's no, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, with that.
Oh, Commissioner Craig. I'm thinking about this point. If Commissioners Zisser wanted to present the exhibit before we opened the public comment period, this would be the time to do so.
That is an excellent point. Oh, and also I should disclose that I went out to the site and saw the square that you folks painted. I think we, most of us, it's a square. It's white thing. Yes, but did you want to give our?
Yeah, I guess I should explain, I did some extra work on this because at the SARC, when I, you know, there's, I guess there's primarily three things that are happening. Taking down the onings, which I think is the right thing to do, and, 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 and new painting of the window trim, and then the repainting of the building. And my first interpretation until I looked closely at it was they were just going to give it an update, a painting of the existing color. And then I realized when I looked at the, the color on the drawings that it was a, a light, much different color and, and was a white. And so, and yet there hadn't been, appeared to be any discussion about that. We had a representative from the Historical Preservation Board who didn't really have input on that and, and I later, after Larissa provided for them, I, I read the minutes of, of their meeting and there wasn't any discussion about the painting. It seemed to me, based on the fact that this is a, the oldest historical downtown building, it's prominent, it's the entrance to the eastern side, that it's of major consequence that in addition to removing the, the onings, the repainted thing is worthy of, of, of just consideration. That's all. I, I might, I didn't have a, a feeling one way or another necessarily. I tried to reserve my judgment on it until I took a little harder look at it. So, so I did do a little research on, on Mission Revival and Larissa's right on point in terms of a lot of Mission Revival buildings are the, a, a white color of this type, and so it, it works in terms of, of that. But I actually created, actually created this, this, this picture. I do some, I'm not an expert graphic artist, but I do Photoshop work for many years, and so I took the actual color that was big, going to be used and I, there's a way of digitally reproducing the exact color and I, I treated, on the left side, I retreated the building. I think it's quite accurate. I actually went down and compared my printout with, with the swatch, just to make sure. So I, I personally believe that, and I took one oning off, as you can see, just to give you an idea of what it looks like without an oning. The other onings would have been tough to do for me. So, so this is kind of really close, I believe. I actually darkened it a tiny bit from, because the, the white really seems like it's like reflective sunlight. So I actually, I did a little adjustment of the brightness, and so this is actually a tad bit less white than what the real white is. So, so I, I thought it would be useful not only for my own edification, for everybody's edification to see what the new look would be. So I hope, I hope you felt this is worthwhile and so I just felt that repainting the entire building, considering what the building is, it's, it's worthy of, of, of seeing more than just the swatch. So there you go.
Thank you for the illustration. Much appreciated. With that, I think it's time to open the public hearing. The applicant like to speak?
The applicant is online and would like to speak.
Right. I think generally the applicant gets five minutes, everyone else gets two. Whenever you're ready. June, you're on.
Hello, everybody. I'm Gino Catalano, the job captain working on this project with TOPA Architecture. And I'd like to speak in support of our project here. So this building, as previously stated, features pretty prominently in the downtown historic core of Campbell, and we were really excited to work with the, our client on this, the building owner to start or partially restore some of that history. First and foremost, by removing those non-authentic onings, and secondly, by repainting the exterior to more accurately reflect its Mission Revival style. We went through, you know, a few different paint swatches and compared it with other Mission Revival styled buildings within San Jose and Campbell that we could find, and this one really matched up pretty well. And both us and client were quite happy with the outcome of the resulting paint palette that was chosen. As also stated, we did originally intend to modify the storefront on the ground floor to be more in line with its historical appearance. However, due to FAR regulations in the general plan, we were unable to. But going forward, we were directed by the owner from the outset to work with the city pretty closely to do what we could to start restoring this facade. And as such, we've also engaged with a reputable general contractor to ensure that this proposed work will be of the highest quality and are of course going through all the proper channels to make sure this project gets processed correctly. And that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions with the applicant?
Yeah, just, just one quick question, Mr. Paul. I'm not sure if this is your area, but is Blue Line Pizza, I see they're doing interior changes too. Is Blue Line Pizza leaving that site?
Not to my knowledge. We are currently only involved with the exterior remodel and work on the second floor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. Would anyone from public like to speak on this? Is anyone online who'd like to speak on this? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Let's start from this side.
I like removing the onings. I have no issue with paint color. Seems like a nice update. I support it.
I, I think they're all really incredible updates and I want to again thank the very detailed report in terms of the history and the comparison to the style and the expectations around the color. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, yeah, I'm not in favor of it, and I do thank Commissioners Zisser for his diligence and he, he's really got too many buildings more prominent for, for Campbell, so thank you for that.
I'm also in favor of the project. I think Commissioners Zisser did a great job. It looks nice and clean. You know, I'm not the right person when it comes to colors, but the impression I get is it looks like fresh, you know, so thank you.
Okay, so you know, I, I, these are the kind of things that I look at, you know, because I, I spent a lot of time in marketing and, and I had guys working for me and I had And I had, I had to learn about design and look. And so this tends to make me obsessive about stuff like this. So I, I apologize for that a little bit. But so, so the color was like, okay, you're going to change the color. What's the color going to look like? And, and to be honest, my first inclination was, wow, that's really white. And, and then I looked at the mission style, I looked at a lot of pictures and whatnot and did some research on it. And then I did my little work and, and it has grown on me. It's, it's, we don't actually, you know, we have. I, I walked downtown a lot and I see, I, I, I've been noticing the colors even more. And, and we have a wide variety of, of, of tones. That vary from earth tones to various types of grays. The only other white building is the, those little funky buildings, the courtyard. Okay, but, but I've actually, in just the last week or two, I've, I've started to. Feel really comfortable with, with going with the, the white, the white look on it. And, and I certainly have no problem with, I think removing the awnings is a good, is a good thing. So I, I'm, I'm very comfortable at this point with it, as long as the rest of the commission is.
Thank you. All right, do sense. The building looked lovely before. I think it will look lovely after. I really appreciate that someone has taken the time to, you know, maintain it and update it. I'm also glad that they cared enough to go through a discretionary process. And I'm especially excited about the idea that this will be a simpler administrative process going forward. Maybe we'll see even more people maintaining slash refreshing our historic buildings. With that, does anyone have?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go on.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution referenced in attachment A, approving a tier one historic resource alteration permit in site. An architectural review permit, PLN 2022-145.
Second.
Please call the room.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Campcorn.
Aye.
Commissioner Crane.
Aye.
Last chair, Suzer. Chair Booklander.
Aye.
Congratulations. All right, let's move on to item two. That's PLN 201958, 911 South McGlinsey Lane. Uh, this is specifically. A public hearing to consider the request to tear from a development for properly located area to allow construction of an approximately fifty-three, fifty square foot industrial building. With requested increase to the allowable floor area ratio, elimination of the side rear setbacks and reduction to the required landscaping area and retention of overhead frontage utility lines. Are there any disclosures before we begin? If you want to say something, you turn the.
Yeah, just visited the site.
And I had visited this site too.
I have walked past the site a bunch of times, but not recently on purpose for this. It's near where I live, but more than a mile away. Okay, the planner for this one is Daniel Fama. Take it away.
Thank you. So item two is a sign architecture review permit for nine eleven South McGlinsey Lane. Uh, this is a approximately eleven thousand six hundred square foot property on South McGlinsey. I'll use that's north of Curden Avenue, uh, within the M1 Light Industrial zoning district and the corresponding general plan, Light Industrial, uh, Light News District. Uh, the property is currently developed with an old single family house that's being commercially used in a industrial manner consistent with the rest of the McGlinsey industrial neighborhood. The application before includes two components. The first is the signed architecture review permit that would allow construction of an approximately fifty-three hundred square foot industrial building. And that would include a increase in the allowable floor area ratio from point four to point four six. Elimination of the side and rear setbacks and a reduction to the required landscaping. And then separately, a, a utility variance to allow retention of the overhead frontage utility lines, which otherwise would normally need to be replaced with new underground service. That runs parallel along the site. Uh, this is the site plan as currently shown in your packet. Uh, this demonstrates the, the proposed building occupying the entirety of the rear of the property. Up to basically a zero setback at the side and rear property lines. And within the front half of the site, you have landscape by our retention facilities at the front, parking stalls, a small trash enclosure. And a pedestrian walkway leading from the public sidewalk, uh, down to the front of the building and then also connecting to, uh, the accessible parking stalls. Uh, this is a slightly revised, I apologize, this is also the landscaping sheet here. Uh, this is trying to demonstrate the specific landscaping adjustments that are proposed. So effectively, we have two separate requests, uh, one to eliminate the perimeter landscaping. Normally, a property of this type requires five foot landscaping along the side and rear of the property. Uh, the, the building, of course, would remove any ability to have landscaping since it would have a zero setback. But additionally, the plans propose no landscaping at the sides at the parking lot, simply because there is not sufficient space to have. Two rows of parking stalls and they require twenty-five foot, uh, drive aisle in between them as well as pedestrian walkway. So it's just a physical law constraint. And then separately from that is, uh, it's currently proposing these plans, a reduction in landscaping, uh, from an eight percent minimum to the. Which is standard for the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District to seven percent. So it's noted in your staff report and as originally highlighted in the SARC memo. Uh, staff was recommending that the project site lose, uh, some parking stalls to provide additional landscaping. Uh, since this site is not subject to any parking requirements under AV 2097, there is a little flexibility there. Uh, the applicant did email me a preliminary revision sheet, uh, that's shown here. So a condition of approval would require formal revision as part of the construction plan set submitted for a building permit. That provides additional landscaping consistent with the M1 zoning district. So this revised plan actually shows, uh, ten percent total landscaping by the loss of three stalls, um, showing that that is in fact feasible. In terms of design, this is a simple purpose, uh, flat roof structure. It's a CMU block that's concealed with plaster. And then it would be painted in neutral colors, Sherman Williams Adaptive Shade, which is a natural gray brown color accented with, uh, Sherman Williams Virgil Tote. So in terms of the utility variance, uh, because McGlinsey is identified as a collector's street. And the city's, uh, street diagram is part of the general plan. Uh, the city's utility undergrounding requirements actually require replacement of the overhead utility lines that run parallel across the property's frontage. Pull to pull. So that actually extends beyond the property's, uh, principal frontage, effectively crossing on both sides. Uh, this is something we had identified some time ago to the applicant, uh, that was a requirement. And we did suggest that they hire a joint trench, uh, utility consultant to prepare a undergrounding utility examination that would provide some. A reasonable basis for the city to grant a variance to allow retention of these utilities, which has become increasingly common. Primarily for a couple of reasons really, uh, the increasing complexity of undergrounding projects, which after the San Bruno fire. Have, became very difficult due to PG and requirements and how these poles can be treated. A number of projects that did actually do the undergrounding resulted in additional poles, which began to undermine the whole point. There's also additional cost associated with this as well as having to. Manage the impact to adjacent properties since these poles do obviously connect to other property owners. So we had asked for him to provide that material. Unfortunately, we do not have it yet. And then he can speak to, uh, that question a little more. We do have applicant in attendance. So in terms of review considerations, I can have three big buckets here. So we have the floor area increase, uh, reduced rear setbacks and landscaping adjustments. Uh, the zoning code is pretty wide open. It basically gives the planning commission wide discretion to grant those types of exceptions when circumstances warranted. There are not strict findings to make. As discussing your staff report, staff is supportive of the increased FAR. And as much as the property next door did receive a comparable increase. And then under the new general plan, the Light Industrial Zoning District would be granted a one point O FAR. Others kind of understanding that would be acceptable. In terms of reduced setback, uh, the, this is the application that actually triggered the zoning code text amendment. Uh, I believe a year and a half or perhaps two years ago. That would allow the planning commission to actually allow this type of request. And then in terms of the landscaping adjustment is noted, uh, there is clearly a need to allow for elimination of the side landscaping. Since it's physically impossible to provide it, but, uh, the condition of approval would require the provision of additional landscaping as applicant has provided in the revised site plan. So in terms of the reduction of the size setback, the findings for that are actually a little more specific. In order to allow a zero setback, uh, the building cannot be more than thirty feet tall, one story, must not butt, butt or residential properties. And then the building must be limited to general industrial use. Uh, this proposal does satisfy those requirements. And then in the last point, the utility variance, as I noted, the applicant did not provide any documentation to support the establishment of the findings. Unfortunately, we are at, unable to provide any recommendation in support of that request. So therefore, the staff does recommend the planning commission adopt the resolution, approving the signed architecture review permit for construction of the new building. And adopt a separate resolution denying without prejudice a variance to allow, uh, overhead retention of the frontage utilities. So the distinction without prejudice that does allow the applicant to return, uh, within one year's time, less than one year's time, which otherwise he would be recruited from doing so. And that would allow the request to be considered without having to open up the primary entitlement of the signed architectural review permit for the building. And with that, and I'll take any questions, Commissioner Mayha.
I think you start from this side. Do you have questions for staff?
No, that was very thorough. Nothing I wasn't covered.
Yep. Thank you for that thorough report.
Yeah, you know, I do have a, do have a few, and Daniel, it kind of came up here, uh, just not to be completely stupid here, but, but we say zero setbacks. So, and I tried to look at the drawing, so the building is going to be directly next to both properties.
Yeah, I think technically it might be a matter of inch or two.
Okay. And I, you know, I saw, uh, every, uh, and I saw that we have just recently approved the larger FAR. I don't think that's an issue, but have we approved, uh, zero setbacks in this area?
I, yes, so the commission did approve this, um, I believe also on McGlinsey earlier. Earlier, actually it was late last year. It was a conversion of the house to an industrial building. It was a.
That was a zero setback.
It was a single family house, but as part of that in the back, they were building a new storage building. And so that building had a zero setback and used this provision.
I just, just for curiosity, so I, and I saw the reasons why, you know, we can allow the zero setback in industrial, you know, it's not residential, et cetera, et cetera. Which all makes sense, but what are the arguments for setbacks in industrial areas? What's the reason it had just general aesthetics or is there, maybe there's noise with the?
Yeah, I think.
Between the buildings and earthquake issues or something?
I think the original intent was aesthetic. I mean, the two thousand and one general plan very much to try to improve the built environment of the McGlinsey area. But I think in practice, you find that with five foot setbacks in industrial buildings, those become just areas for unpermitted storage.
Yeah, okay. So, but, uh, this wouldn't be a precedent setting to have zero setback.
Correct. I mean, historically, most buildings prior to the two thousand and one general plan had no setback. And in fact, many buildings in their early days following adoption of the zoning code and general plan two thousand and one actually did get variances. So this, this particular standard has not been affected, which is why it was modified.
Another weird question I'm thinking of just before I forget though, but, uh, so I, I noticed that the. Measured one half mile to the Winchester White Rail has the profise.
Yes.
Is that, is that the way that the state is, is doing that, huh?
It is, unfortunately.
It is. Okay, see, all right. Uh, and then, so my final question is on the whole variance thing. Uh, and I know that the, the applicant will speak and we can talk to them. So, uh, so the applicant said something about that, you know, it would disrupt the neighbors, which of course would happen with a lot of these things. But, but I think from your presentation, I'm getting that basically, you know, there's a big cost to this. And it doesn't really do that much because you might wind up with more poles anyways. So. So I'm trying to ask this question fairly or, or, so what would require an applicant to hire? A engineer to really tell us something that we know that we're going to say, okay, that's fine.
Unfortunately, findings cannot be just made with common sense. We do need something, evidence in the record that supports it. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I actually saw this project in the SARC, you know, and so I familiar. A question on the variance, do they have an option for in Luffy?
No, the city does not have a in Luffy structure for utility underground.
Okay, because I run into these quite a bit on, on my, you know, on my everyday work. And, um, undergroundings, we're talking something like five, six hundred dollars a foot. So, you know.
I believe this is why in the new general plan, there is a policy to address the city's, uh, utility undergrounding requirements.
Um, and then the question about the, the zero side setback, uh, is this going to be like a tilt up? You know, because with tilt up, especially if there's a, um, building adjacent to it, then you probably have to use a tilt up technique to be able to build this, right?
Um, that, you can speak to the exact construction method.
Okay, uh, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was on the SARC and we covered this too. And I think all my questions were answered, including the, the question about the variance issue. So I have no questions.
Thank you for the report. I, I, I certainly appreciate, um, mention of how this application looked different under the general plan that we just. voted in support of yesterday. So, uh, I think that does certainly, at least for me, informs how much to be concerned about things which. They're not the rules yet, but there's room to make them the rules. That said, um, there's no further questions for staff. All of them in the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? Thank you for coming. Please introduce yourself.
Residential neighborhood that predates the birth of any of the commissioners. And the size of this lot doesn't really allow for anything other than what we're proposing. The two of the adjacent properties are lot line built. And the building that was approved next door was originally going to be lot line and was approved. When it, uh, approved on lot line. What are the questions you guys have for me? Undergrounding, ooh. My architect is supposed to be finding someone to, to come up with the reason because the common sense isn't sufficient enough. Most of the buildings on McGlinsey Lane have overhead power. It currently has overhead power. And I'm also being led believe and given quotes and estimates that it's going to cost somewhere approaching over a hundred thousand dollars just to underground the utilities.
Out of curiosity, um, what type of, uh, use will this be? Is this a warehouse?
Warehouse, yes. Storage.
Thank you.
Service business.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Say, would anyone else here like to speak on this issue? Would anyone online like to speak on this issue? That said, I'll close the public hearing. Let's start from this side.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think the project's okay. You know, a couple of different things than they would usually do, but, uh, given the certain situation, I think that's fine. I, I, I think if the, uh, we forgot to talk about the, uh, removing a couple of parking spots for the landscaping, which I think is a, is a nice little plus. Doesn't bother me too much, to be honest, either way in this particular location, but it's nice, always nice to have the landscaping if we don't need the parking. That makes sense. And, uh, yeah, I guess if we have to, uh. Uh, I guess we have to deny the, the variance without prejudice. And it sounds like though it might be too much of an issue, uh, in the long run, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I also support the, uh, recommendations of staff. And yeah, undergrounding is definitely a huge burden. But, you know, we cannot, um, create precedences, you know, so. Uh, I support the deny without prejudice, uh, recommendation on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I think the, the, the. The design and everything looks fine to me. And, and I would just say, in case, in the case of.
The design and everything looks fine to me and, and I would just say in case, in the case of the variance, it's like. There's a week, you know, I would, I've been here and not long enough to know that we've done variances before on this. And it's good chance that you would get your variance, but I would encourage the applicant to just. Get the documentation that's required and then. To be able to. Allow the variance decision to go forward. Thank you.
I agree with the other comments by my fellow commissioners.
Also don't have anything to add other than what was added. Thank you.
I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I can certainly see why it is that. Going forward, there is, I believe, a plan on deck to rewrite our undergrounding ordinance.
It's, it's a policy, so one day it will be added to the work plan.
So it's the best we can do, given how much we have going on. I don't have anything else to add. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make the motion. Do we have to make two motions or? I, I guess, just one.
One motion, just.
Yeah, just resolve that the planning commission, Campbell Planning Commission approves a sign architectural review permit to allow construction of an approximately five thousand three hundred and fifty square foot industrial building. With the requested increase to allow a floor area ratio, elimination of the side mirror setbacks and a reduction to the required landscaping area. Was there any wording that you asked there, Daniel? Okay. Yeah, on the property located nine eleven McLean's and also that the planning commission. Denying with prejudice of variance to allow retention of existing overhead utility lines to serve a proposed development on the property located nine eleven South McLean's Lane.
Did we make that without prejudice?
Pardon me?
I believe that was supposed to be without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes.
Second.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Rusk.
Aye.
Commissioner Kankar.
Aye.
Commissioner Curran.
Aye.
Buster Cesar.
Triple founder.
Aye.
Congratulations. And that brings us to item three. Which is PLN twenty twenty-two dash seventy-nine, twenty-four, twenty-eight Campbell Avenue. The description is. Public hearing, your request, consider the request of Joma Studio Architects for property located there to allow construction of a three-story, approximately eight thousand square foot mixed-use building. Consisting of ground floor and second level or mezzanine commercial slash office space and three one-bedroom upper level apartment units. This is, Daniel Fama is the planner. Take it away.
Thank you again. So item three is a plant development permit for property located at twenty-four to twenty-eight East Campbell Avenue. This is a small forty-four hundred square foot site. It comes seen two small properties as shown in the map. Looking down East Campbell Avenue, south of which. Excuse me, east of Winchester Boulevard, as within the city's planned and all its zoning district and within the central commercial. General Plan Land Use District and also within the boundaries of the downtown development plan. The site is currently developed with the Hero's Comic Book Building and a residential structure located behind it off the alley. So the proposal specifically is a plant development permit that would allow the eight thousand square foot three-story mixed-use building. As noted in the staff report, this is not a housing development project per the Housing Accountability Act. Since the amount of residential square footage exceeds. Non-residential square footage exceeds one-third. The proposal is specifically include three one-bedroom upper level apartment units. This would result in a density of twenty-three point three units per gross acre, which is under the twenty-seven units maximum for the central commercial designation. And then you would have an additional twenty-eight hundred square feet of ground level mezzanine commercial space and then additional twelve hundred square feet of. Core area, which is elevator shafts, storage and trash room area, resulting in the FAR one point oh five. This is under the one point five maximum, which as a mixed-use building excludes the residential component of the structure. In terms of the building's configuration, so this building would be set behind the new sidewalk line. The Public Works Department is requiring a two-foot dedication of right-of-way to allow for a widened sidewalk. As noted in your staff report, the site does not reflect the preliminary design that was actually noted in the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan. Which would have tried to actually extend the curb line here all the way across to create additional onsite, onsite, offsite parking stalls. Along Campbell Avenue, that additional amount of right-of-way would have made really any attempt of the site to be redeveloped. Very difficult, not nearly impossible. So with this configuration, the retail storefront would open up right until Campbell Avenue. So the applicant is proposing to use this space as his commercial showroom, which is a type of retail activity. So this area of East Campbell Avenue would fall within the parameters of the city's pedestrian-oriented activities. I use definition for the downtown, which allows for a wide variety of uses now into the future. Then the residential access would be down a walkway along the side of the building to secondary doors. So that there's a clear distinction between the residential and commercial components of the site. And then due to a number of reasons, but then also as allowed by AB twenty ninety-seven, this project is not proposing any onsite parking. Initially, there had been some parking stalls proposed at the rear, but those stalls proved unfortunately on, on non-feasible to actually build. In terms of design, the building is shown at a technical forty-one foot building height, which is underneath the forty-five foot height limits. There is a footnote in your staff report that describes how that height is derived. Basically, the height limit excludes certain components of a building such as elevator shafts, stairway shafts. So even though those are technically the highest point of the building, they actually are not the technical height. So the technical height is the western facility on top of the building. There is a rooftop deck and so that's a functional space, so the top of that at forty-one feet is the building height. And so in terms of design, the building has been built with a very tall entry area with a two-level ground level interface with expansive glazing. The upper level has been recessed back to minimize the massing of the building from the pedestrian level. The site, the site, the project includes dockings and terraces for the residential units. And as I noted, there is also a rooftop deck that would be used by the residents and any commercial users. The design front as well, have the illustration here and the color palette shows three primary building materials, stack stone. Cladding and stucco. And then generally, the idea here is to provide a contemporary appearance that uses traditional materials, which is consistent with a longer development in the downtown. By maintaining that traditional building form. So generally, want to have well-designed buildings, but not overly mimic historic buildings, since you don't want to diminish the sense of what's actually historic and what's not. In terms of review considerations, broadly speaking, you do have the downtown development plan, design guidelines that speak to building orientation and layout. The ground level of how that building interfaces with the street and how well the building is articulated. There are also applicable general plan and downtown development plan policies to take into consideration. These generally do encourage mixed-use buildings within the downtown areas in proximity of light rail. The downtown development plan talks about maximizing development potential, which this project does. There's also a desire from the plan to allow expansion beyond the, just the loop street areas. And this is, of course, on the outer side of the loop streets and will provide a stronger connection to Winchester Boulevard. Which is important because Winchester Boulevard is intended to become part of an urban corridor that physically connects to the downtown. So this helps strengthen that future link. And then lastly, in terms of the housing elements, this project site would be subject to the plant for densities policy. It basically says that residential mixed-use sites need to satisfy seventy-five percent of the allowable density, which this does. This is basically, three units is the highest number of units that the site could accommodate anymore. You would actually exceed the twenty-seven units per gross acre maximum. And in conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission take all in action about the resolution recommending that city council approve the plant development permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? We'll start from this side.
Mostly just out of curiosity, how does the retail space in this compare to what we were talking about last night for like a tier two? Thing in terms of width and storefront, just curious how this sort of maps.
I'm afraid I wasn't at the meeting last night, so in terms of.
You missed a barn burner.
In terms of depth, I'm looking at the sideline, I believe the depth is about forty-five feet, so it's fairly deep.
Okay. Great, that's it.
Thank you. That was a thorough point. I don't have any questions.
Let's start from this side. Please your break.
Yeah, Dan, just, so I'm not, so, okay, on the parking. So we can require parking on this kind of a project.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's not, not even an issue. I do know that it's in the staff report how the. Owner of this property here is going to have a parking agreement with the, the next door lot, so. We don't, the city doesn't have any. I, I'm just wondering if, because that lot, it's a lot more parking than I expected there, but there's a lot of cars parked there too all the time. I don't know, there's so many different uses, so the city doesn't monitor if there's, if there's too many parking spots being leased out by the order of that. Parking ladder.
I mean, not directly, but I mean arguably, I mean, parking is intended for the use that it serves. So to the extent that, I mean, if you start to undermine the site ability to park itself, that does become a bit problematic. But, I mean, you know, to some extent too, there's also a selection bias, I mean, in terms of housing. If people need a lot of parking, they typically avoid spaces that have no parking.
And I'm just trying to, that's the street behind there, and I think it's Sanford or whatever, that's, that's. That's not permit parking or anything.
No.
Okay. Rooftop deck, and we didn't mention it, but that's just, that's just for private uses, just for the residents and.
Correct.
And the owner.
Yeah, and there is a condition of approval that will require the applicant to prepare a. Have an operational plan for review by staff in terms of the rooftop deck. Just ensure that such details in terms of hours of operation, noise, furniture, use of barbecues. You know, just relatively basic stuff is at least managed somehow.
Yeah, we don't have too many rooftop decks, so it's nice to see that. And then my, my, one area, final area of questions is, and so that sidewalk is very thin or skinny, it would be nice. So we're going to require, the city is requiring two feet. It basically where the Hero's building is now, right, kind of on that side.
Correct, so that would take the sidewalk to ten feet wide.
That, that's actually ten feet?
Well, it will become ten feet.
Yeah, even with the two, it's eight now. It looks so much thinner.
Well, there is also, I think, while the, some of the landscaping brush is in there, so that whole space is taken out, it will be standard with commercial sidewalk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I really like the design of the building, you know, I really appreciate the rooftop deck that they're designing. To me, it's like a gateway to downtown and it's such a happy building. I love the colors, I. Oh. Does everyone else like the color? Okay, I guess I lost for words. I like it.
That's good. That's, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I, I, I was in the SARC meeting and, and a gal, my questions answered then, thank you.
Anyway, thank you for the report. There's no further questions. We'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Come on up, please introduce yourself. You don't have five minutes.
My name is Dan Sarkisian. I live on thirty-eight South Fourth, Fourth Street. I was, when I looked at this project, I don't see very much parking. And then tonight I'm hearing the same thing, that there isn't any parking, extra parking. Between our house, where I live next to Torino's, the Italian restaurant. There's no parking on the street the way it is, and I'm just wondering where these people are going to be parking.
Thank you for your comment. Is, is the applicant here? Oh, well, please come up. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Anthony Drama. I'm the project architect. As Daniel mentioned in his report, this is an urban infill and a pretty tight site. In terms of parking currently, the owner has an agreement with the next door lot, but. You're also on the impression that the in Luffy could also work in our case. The building is a three-story building, but the top floor, as Daniel mentioned, has been pulled back significantly. To keep the mass similar to the adjacent buildings. And the building mostly commercial and three residential unit. And a showroom with the building material retail showroom. They have a separate residential entry to the building. And the commercial entry is at the front of a building. One thing, of course, we wanted to maintain was the commercial continuity. By having that show, so. Maintain that street character of the sound. I'll be happy to answer any question.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
When, when we say the lot next door, like what are we talking about, like Blue Sky or what parking lot are we saying? You mentioned like an agreement with a parking lot next door, like what parking lot are we speaking on?
The parking lots are along the, between the property line, between the two properties. If you want the exact.
There's a next lot subway store. That parking lot is a, a different person. Place and most of this. I think they're basically going from the Campbell side, if the concern is the fourth street. They're shifting the traffic and foot to the Campbell with this proposed plan.
Okay, great. And then my only other question, the apartments, are you selling those? Are you renting those?
I have a construction company. That would be my headquarters in, so. Basically planning to sell luxury construction materials. And then in the back, it was an office, but. For same parking requirement, it was parking between parking and office. So basically it's office and three.
That's great. That's it, thank you.
Yes, yes, sir, sir, this is, and this comes up all the time, this issue, so. So the parking agreement that you have, that's for your commercial business?
Yes.
And for the residential, for the residential, there's no parking agreement or will there be?
There is a, there is a parking already. It's a, it's a basically driveway, you park inside the property. It's not officially parking.
Not official parking, but there's room there where they can park?
Yes.
It's an access easement.
Yes.
In the rear alley.
In the rear, yeah, that's, that's what I was getting to, I was just going to ask, if you, if you rent or sell those units to somebody. Who owns a car, where you, where do you expect that they'll park?
It fits three cars.
And you expect it will be, okay, okay, well, thank you.
Same, I have questions, the applicant?
Just to be clear, I think, I think. I already know the answer, but I just want to make it clear because of the parking, but you know, there's no parking because, because we're close to mass transit, right? We're within a half a mile, so that's why there's no parking requirement. But, but the parking we're talking about, I live quite near there. More than three hundred feet, so I didn't have to disclose that. We're talking on the fence, right? The, the fence that's, you know, in that little shopping area. That you already have parking, it's like Hero's in, you know, in, in the apartment there. So there's either three slots or there's one, three slots.
Adjacent property.
Though for, for your place, the adjacent property, there's slots along, along the fence, right? They're right along the fence rather than in front of the stores, right? And there's, so there's four, okay. That's why I just want to clarify, so there, there's existing arrangement there that I will assume is going to continue.
Yes, it does not affect what it is right now. It is a traffic right now. That comic book store is busier, that it's going to be easier than what is going to be later on.
Yeah, I understand.
There's no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, there's no else in the chambers. I am online with comment. With that, I'll close the public hearing. With that, I'll close the public hearing, let's uh start from this side, Mr. Craig, you want to start us off?
Uh yeah, you know, there's really so many, so many great things about this project, really, uh. You know, we get more residential, it's a kind of a night, it's a nice design and it is a key location. I do love the the you know, the rooftop deck, I think is is what we're, what we're looking for in some places such as this, and I like that the. That the top floor has a pretty real big setback there, and I think that that'll make it nice, uh. Yeah, I don't know, you know, the park, the parking thing is kind of taken out of our hands and we're going to see how that all shakes out, uh. You know, there's a lot of people that that can can rent that and and. They won't have a car, or if there's a couple, maybe they'll get by with one car instead of two, and. If the one car has fewer trips than the two car would have, then we wind up okay, if it has the same amount of trips as the two cars, whatever. And where we, wherever we ended up, but uh. You know, it's, I, they'll build and and people have to park somewhere and I'm sure they'll find places and and if there, if there is no parking and they have a car and they really have to. Park the car, I guess they won't stay there too long, I get, the market will probably dictate that, so uh. So what I guess I'm getting to is that, you know, I I the 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 no parking thing is going to hover over us for for quite a while until we see how it shakes out, uh. But you know, there's the need for residences, there's a, it's a nice project for the site there, doing a lot on a little site, uh does have the ground, you know. Has the commercial on the ground floor and kind of helps that area a little bit, and uh. You know, a lot of pluses, I think the pluses outweigh uh. Any negatives, and the only negatives we have really no say over anyway, the main one, I guess, I'm talking about the parking, so yeah, I think I'm I'm in favor, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um I'm also in favor, I reviewed this with commissioners, is there, when it came to SARC, you know, and um. Asked quite a bit of questions and. Uh one of the reasons I'm very enthusiastic about this project, because I see this as a sort of like a gateway to downtown and, you know, all the. Happy colors, you know, and um I'd like to think of Campbell as a happy city, you know, and um. Downtown being a happy place, and this to me sets the mood, you know, with the blue tint and. The architectural design that gives the building the articulation that we're looking for, the um rooftop deck, you know, all the. Things that. I like to see in a building, you know, it's present, it it has commercial components, residential component, you know. Uh I share the concern with my commissioners, you know, fellow commissioners about the parking, but. That's out of our hands, you know, so as they say, don't worry about things you can't control, you know, so I'm in favor, thank you.
Would you like to go now or after?
Okay, uh I I'm uh, you know, uh uh both Commissioner can can kind of, I agree, it's a, I I think it's a nice little project and. The the only concern is i- is the parking, but as as others have said. Uh we're, our hands are tied because of state law, that we don't have it, uh we we can't put in a requirement for parking. I I I would only hope that uh that the gentleman who lives on Fourth Street, that you don't get over for parking, I mean, uh. Uh it remains to be seen, but um the fact that there are going to be at least four stalls. In the adjacent parking lot, to me is hopeful, that it'll take care of most of the problems, so um. I I'm in favor of the project, I I love the rooftop idea and it does make for a nice final. Not that I didn't like Heroes, I mean, my my son's not going to be unhappy about Heroes going away, but. But it makes for a nice final piece to there, um uh along that and on that street, so I I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Straskin?
I I also agree that it's a really beautiful design, it's a great use for the lot, it's great that you had the. Wherewithal to have the uh parking um agreement put in pa- place to hopefully alleviate some of the concerns that we heard earlier today and and. Often do here when we have to approve projects because of state mandates that um don't require parking. So I uh definitely support the project and uh thank you for bringing it forward.
Uh really like the design, beautiful design, I think this whole meeting is fun, we booked ended item one and three, we got. One end of downtown, we updating our oldest building, we got a beautiful fire building sort of frame on the other side, it's just a. Fun meeting, fun day for us and go wholeheartedly uh approve.
Um I have, I'm sorry, I didn't necessarily, I just had one question for staff. Broadly speaking, would this? Would this building be allowable and would this building be ministerially approved under the rules that we approved yesterday?
So, well, it would not be ministerial, so because this is not a housing development project. It's treated as just a normal conventional application, so this would now. In the future, general plan require assigned architecture review permit, so not no longer planned development permit. So the commission would be the decision making authority, it would not need to go to council.
Okay, and this one does need to go to council?
It does.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, um so uh I'd like to say that if if folks have concerns about parking, um one. Parking management policy is no longer available to the city in certain areas, and that's parking mandates, but there are other parking management policies like residential permits. The one thing we can't do is just demand plenty of extra parking everywhere. This is a beautiful building, I'm really impressed to how this makes really excellent use of a small lot, I think this is exactly what A B twenty ninety seven was designed to do, I I think. We're told that, you know, if we had had to squish parking stalls into it, this just wouldn't have happened. Um I really appreciate that my fellow commissioners find it a beautiful building, I agree, the built environment should be functional and beautiful, and I think this one is both, uh. Like, I would be very happy to see more of this come before the commission, this is a really nice looking building, and I look forward to seeing it. Uh with that, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Uh be resolved, I move that we be resolved that the planning commission recommends that the city council approve a plan development permit, P L N. Two O two two dash seventy nine to allow construction of three story approximately eight thousand square foot mixed use building. Consisting of ground floor and second level mezzanine and commercial office space. And three one bedroom upper level apartment rooms for property located twenty four to twenty eight East Campbell Avenue. Subject to the attached recommended conditions of approval, attached exhibit A.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Forbes?
Aye.
Commissioner Straskin?
Aye.
Commissioner Campore?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Scissor?
Aye.
Joe Buckbender?
Aye, passes seven zero, congratulations. Oh, can I ask roughly when the building will be built? Cool. I I guess that has to go to the city council, so uh I believe that's it, is there a report from the community development director?
Just two notes, I'm here on your second note, so I'll keep you, uh one I sent you a film in the last spring, you have, we have a couple of students here. They visit downtown to a nice little downtown development plan and it's posted on our website, has a plethora of ideas and they applied for a planning award and were awarded. So I just wanted to let the commission know that, good work by the students. And uh just want to let you know, all the work last night, four and a half hours work is on swing and city council, we do have a date and time if you wanted to put it down, so. City council will consider the broad package of items from general plan, on the reserve orders on April eighteenth, uh starting at four o'clock, and that's all you have.
Um one thing before we. Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, Daniel reminded me of one item, so uh we had reviewed a variance item, I think it was uh a few meetings back, six day page. Uh one day the commission knew that, we did receive an appeal, uh you'll remember we had some neighbors here who commented on the variance. A lot of the content had to do with the aesthetics and some other issues. Appeal was filed with our department, uh we take the appeal to the city council, once approval body on appeals from the planning commission. Uh they did deliver on the item, the item was continued, they did not uh take an action. And there was some discussion on the merits of approving a variance down to three feet. So there's a lot of discussion back and forth, um I think uh perhaps soon. Votes to uphold the variance, uh decision was made to continue the item, to allow the applicant to think about a design change. And at this point, they are, and I believe it's set to come back to the city council on May third. Looking at Daniel, I believe that's correct.
The sixteen page street, the very narrow lot, reduce that back variance.
Um with that, um I will try not to keep everyone here too long, but some some um months ago, I had suggested that the city declare a state of shelter crisis and I was told, once we finish. Our giant work plan, that I should bring this up in uh March, it's March. Um specifically, I would like to move that we agendize discussion. Of a declaration of shelter crisis per California Government Code, section eight six nine eight dot four, um. In short, this is uh this streamlines certain um. Certain policies to address um homelessness, uh and it runs until the beginning of twenty twenty six. Obviously, I'm not asking anybody to approve this right now because there's a lot of details, but I'm asking to agendize discussion. Uh presumably, this will come before us once staff is no longer entirely underwater. I'm not exactly sure what the process is, do we just take a vote on this? Okay, see none, um could you call the roll?
And can you make the motion?
Oh, yeah, terribly sorry.
Could you repeat?
Could you kind of repeat? Oh, sure, I I would move to agendize discussion of a declaration of shelter crisis according to California Government Code, section eight six nine eight dot four.
One second. Commissioner Forbes?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Straskin? Commissioner Campore?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Scissor? Joe Buckbender?
Aye.
Thank you for trusting me, um all right, with that, uh we will adjourn to, I should know when the next date is. Thank you, to the next planning commission date of April eleventh, twenty twenty three, have a good night.